One nation under God, indivisible, in the name of this law.
Welcome everybody. I'm pleased to say it's not snowing, or raining, or gloving. I'm just happy that it's raining. I'm so pleased. Okay. We're gonna, we have a guest lawyer from the USA School Board Association, Jay Morona. We're just gonna call him now that we're in session. Can you do this, because I want to do this. I think he's some kind of special.
Jay Morona?
Hi Jay, Carol Blechford from Eldon School District.
Hi.
Hi, I'm very good. We've just opened our board meeting and we're very glad that you were part of this. I've got Steve Latino here next to me, and our district superintendent John Morgano, our secretary Sevier Talk, and four of our board members. So, and then we've got an audience of people that crowd. So I think everybody can hear you, you're quite loud on this machine, so that's good. We're gonna leave it set for later. Is that okay?
That's great. Good evening, everybody.
Hi.
Okay, so the first thing we have on our agenda tonight is a resolution to approve the annual special meeting of the voters on the date of June 19, 2018. We're gonna read this resolution, we're gonna ask for a second, and then we'll be open for discussion. And at that time, we'll listen to everybody's discussion on the floor as long as it, in addition to Jay, and Dr. Morgano, and Steve, everybody, okay? So whereas due to extraordinary weather conditions on May 15, 2018, including the loss of electricity down trees causing impassable roads, a tornado warning, Sullivan County declaring a state of emergency, et cetera, the annual meeting could not be fully conducted. She had resolved that pursuant to section 2005 of the education law, the Board of Education hereby called the special meeting of the voters of Eldon School District for the purpose of transacting the business of the annual meeting to be held on June 19, 2018, the date specified in statute for budget re-votes. And we had further resolved that the district clerk is hereby directly to prepare the special meeting notice and publish it once each week before the special meeting, with the first publication to be at least 14 days before the special meeting.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Discussion. Jay, since you're our guest of honor, so to speak, would you like to start with what you understand?
Sure. Unfortunately, your geographic area is a fairly bad weather-related issue. And in fact, in my 34 years of doing what I've done, I have never experienced anything such a bit affecting school district elections. There were many districts that were affected. So I think that, you know, at this point in time, given the circumstances, what is absolutely necessary is that you provide back to your taxpayers, your franchise, because that is, of course, their way to be able to vote. And it sounds to me like your resolution is not only in accord with the law, but it's pretty much your only option at this particular point in time.
Thank you. Steve, do you have any further? Dr. Morgano?
I agree with Jay, with the discussion we had at the last day where this resolution did not go forward. It was essentially the same thing. You have extraordinary weather circumstances here that led to the decision in the interest of the safety of the members of your voting public, and also the people who are working here, who are concerned about weather conditions and the safety of travel on roads. To call the election before you can complete the full annual meeting, it had to go these two hours fast, 16 hours, that did not occur, resulting in you not being able to conduct a full and meeting, a waffle and meeting. And you're now in a situation which is authorized by statute in section 2005 of the education law, which allows you to conduct a revote. As Jay has mentioned, restore the franchise back to the voters, which what we need is that you now have an opportunity to vote. And all those persons who didn't show up because they were concerned about weather conditions, or did not get to vote because of the voting close early, now have that opportunity to come back and vote, and be heard on both the budget and on your election. The thing, as Jay has mentioned, it is the right thing to do, and it is really your only option at this point.
Could we clarify absentee ballots? What would be the new deadline for obtaining and submitting them?
Absentee ballots. Jay, are you familiar with how it's time to propose that absentee ballots? It's an option that people would have the ability to submit absentee ballots. Off the top of my head, I do not know the answer to when they'd have to be submitted by, but I can certainly get that by tomorrow. And I believe you're convinced that Jay knows the answer off the top of his head.
Yeah, unfortunately, now in my office, I don't have my law book in front of me either. So I think that would be the only option to figure out how we can address that situation. But that is something we will do tomorrow, if it may be.
This will go on the website tomorrow morning, and we'll make sure that education is on this.
So Jay, do we know, this is on the road, but do we know the status of the current absentee ballots?
Well, I mean, the status of any vote that would have been either given already would be, you know, foot away. I mean, basically, no one's vote at this point in time, or however many hours he were open, would count. Because that was just mentioned, you know, not only were the polls closed early, but they were closed without the requisite two-hour time period between 6:00 and 8:00 or whatever that the statute required if the polls were open. So, you know, at this point, I think the same way occurred for the absentee ballots that occurred for people who actually did make it to the voting booth. You know, this whole thing is a very unfortunate circumstance. But I will say this, not to lecture to anybody, but obviously decisions that were made based upon, you know, preserving human life. And I think that, you know, we're in a good situation where we can have a redo and thank goodness no one was injured. I mean, that's good.
Yeah, I think that whatever absentee ballots were cast and were sent in, we would be secure along with the other ballots that were cast and then would be locked up. You know, for the time period that they're, at least a year that they have to be held, that they will be held for that time period. But they won't count in the revote.
My understanding as well is that all of the votes that were cast on May 17? On May 15, all of the votes that were cast, including the absentee ballots, will be kept for a year. They need to be unloaded from the machines so that we can return the machine, which is presently locked up in Superman's office. So they will be unloaded, by the way, at Friday at 9:00 a.m. And the public is welcome to come and observe that if they would like to. Friday at 9:00 a.m., we are gonna unload those ballots that were cast, as well as the absentee ballots. And in fact, I understand to be all of the ballots, even the ones that were not filled out, whatever is paid for his left or everything regarding that vote, will be locked up and kept for at least a year, according to our lawyer. Marco said that this morning, that we would keep those locked up for a year.
And where are you going to get loading them out?
That will be at the high school in Dr. Morgano's office. But we will be unloading the ballots this, so that we can return the machine, so that it can be recalibrated for June 19. We have to return it, we can't keep the machine. So we have to unload it, okay? So that is Friday, June 9 a.m. for that. Continue discussion, board members.
I just have a question for Jay. Is there any precedent, Jay, for a school board maybe not closing the election early, but having an election invalidated?
Well, there's lots of precedents for invalidating elections. But those, to be honest, have come in a different context. Because these weather-related emergencies are not something that I've ever seen occur. What I've seen occur is like a district would sometimes tabulate the votes and certify the specific, you know, end result. And then discover minutes later, oh my goodness, we missed something here. At which point, after they already certified the vote, they couldn't then just re-certify it. There's no provision in law. So those types of board members, and those boards, rather, would have to go to the commissioner, asking the commissioner to invalidate that which they just did. It sounds counterintuitive, but there's no ability for a board to undo what it's done. In this particular instance, nothing was done because, you know, the poll said it had to be closed early. So there's nothing really to invalidate, because no action actually was taken. But again, in answer to your question, no, I don't know any precedent, not because of anything but the fact that these weather-related emergencies are not something I think we've ever experienced in this state during election time.
Thank you.
Sure.
We move on to the session.
I have a question for Mr. Latino and Mr. Morona.
Can you hear, uh, Brian, Mr. Morona?
Really low.
I'll speak from up there. Is there being that the election is going to be scheduled for June 19, which is less than a month from now? Is there an opportunity for additional petitioners? And so is there an opportunity for additional petitioners? And is there an opportunity for candidates who were on the ballot on May 15 to withdraw prior to the ballot for June 19?
I think that the petitioners did not close until April 18 or so. I don't think there is, at this point, there's any mechanism to introduce new petitioners to be placed on the ballot. This is still, the vote that took place, I'm sorry, this is still based upon the petitioners that came in to be candidates on April 18, which is the vote that's being moved from May 15 to June 19.
So the ballot is set, so one of our candidates actually withdrew previously, was still on the ballot. Will that candidate still be on the ballot on June 19, the ballot stays the same?
I believe the ballot stays the same.
And if there is a, I'm sorry.
Jay.
No, finish your thoughts, tonight's time to answer. Go ahead.
No, that's okay. Go ahead. It's an unrelated topic.
Okay, no, I agree with Steve. I think that, you know, the operative section of law is section 2005 of the education law. And really, the four corners of the page of what this statute says is when, for whatever reason, you weren't able to hold your annual meeting, which is, you know, what the budget vote is called. Here's what you're gonna do, and then it goes on to say, you'll hold it on the date that's designated in the law versus the date that would have been the budget revote, had the budget gone down. I think that the legislature had envisioned that when you were gonna redo things, there would be a whole bunch of options to change who's gonna be running, and to change the ballot. I think the legislature would set that in the absence of it. What I agree with the statute would be saying is, you're just gonna have to do over exactly as it was supposed to be on the date that you were supposed to hold it. So that's kind of the reading and unwrapping. But again, all of this stuff is uncharted water, it hasn't happened before.
Just a question in terms of how, is the public going to be made aware of this? Do we send out another district newsletter? Or we're sending letters out to the entire community? What's the protocol of this step?
Well, the notices have to be published. There's a requirement that there's notes published of this special meeting to occur once each week, in the two weeks prior, and 14 days before the special meeting. So it has to be republized. On June 7, there's another, there's gonna be another presentation of the budget. And there'll be another board meeting to discuss the budget. Where there'll be further discussion about the budget and the revote and what is going to occur. I'm assuming it's gonna go on your website as well, the revote. So all the global publication for how this will occur on May 15 will then go out for June 19.
Okay, I would suggest that a letter go out to everyone in the community too. I know it's an expense, but not everyone checks the notice columns in the newspapers. Not everyone has access to the internet. So I think in fairness to everyone in the community, it would just be for who of us to send it out to all of them? Whichever way we can possibly get that information to them.
Since that's a monetary expenditure, I think we have to vote on that and not do this one. So let's get this one done, and you can make a resolution if you want. Okay? Brian, did you have any more?
Yeah, so unrelated. So if a vacancy occurs on the Board of Education between now and the June 19 election, what is the procedure that the board would employ to fill that vacancy? Could that be placed into the voter's hands in that the, you know, there would be two positions, a five-year term, and then an unexpired term? Would the voters give that call, or would the Board of Education appoint persons to fill that vacancy?
Did you hear that, Jay or Steve?
Yeah, Jay.
Actually, I did not hear that. I'm sorry. Could someone repeat that?
I'll speak louder, Jay, I'm sorry. If a vacancy occurs on the Board of Education between now and the June 19 vote, would the voters be empowered to choose the replacement for that board member? Or would the board appoint a replacement?
So the voters really wouldn't, in my opinion, I don't think, I'm referring to Steve, but I don't think the voters could do it. Just like, let's assume this weather-related event didn't occur. And the same thing happened just before your election. There wouldn't be any way to change the ballot. And the only thing that you could do, you know, for example, I think you said someone who was not gonna be running right before the election. And, you know, all you could do then is just inform people that this person has decided not to run. But the ballot would still be what it is. In the old days with voter machines, you probably would have locked the lever. But we can't really do that now. But in this instance, I think that, in answer to your question, is we would go with the vote exactly as it has been scheduled. And you guys, you would look at your own school district policies that would dictate how you would make appointments. Because what you could do, of course, is have a special election. After this election would be a big expense, you probably wouldn't do that. Or you could just make appointments, and how you would make the appointment would be consistent with what your policies of your district set to work. Because the state law does not dictate how you would vote it, it's just that you need to do it yourself.
It's very common for schools to appoint members of vacancy if they're coming after elections, to appoint a member by the way.
For the rest of the term of that, of what was actually. Okay.
Well, if someone resigns, you're not appointing them for the whole term. You're appointing them to the next election.
Right, oh, to the next election, not to the end of the term?
Correct.
Oh, to the next election.
That's correct, right. In fact, that the next election, the person who wins that would take office immediately. Because that would be the voter's determination. That would be, you know, made good on.
Any other questions or concerns from the board? Brian?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm gonna call for the vote then. Mr. Siegel?
No.
Ms. Wagner?
No.
Ms. Bose? Mr. Laput?
Yes.
And I'll say yes. The resolution passes as it stands. We have 301, which is approval upon recommendation of the superintendent to set the date of the public hearing, regular board meeting of the Board of Education as June 7, 2018. And this is in order to be in line with what we have to do prior to the next vote. So we've changed our board meeting from what I think would have been a 14 to the 7th, in order to meet the deadline. We had to be a certain amount of days prior to the voting itself. So that's what this is about.
I'll second that.
Discussion? Voting? Mr. Siegel?
No.
Ms. Wagner?
No.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Laput? And I'll say yes.
For the time?
We don't need Jay anymore.
Do we, do we need Jay anymore for any questions?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Jay, thank you so very much for your input. Appreciate it very much.
My pleasure, and when I get off to do something else, give me a call back, okay?
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome.
Just clarifying, I just want to clarify that meeting's gonna be at 7:00 p.m. and that's here at Georgia Ross.
The Board of Education meeting on June 7 should be here at G R M at 7.
We can put that in motion.
Yes, include it in the motion, please. As well, I'm looking for the date it was set for 11 through 9 to be held at the high school. Okay. Do you want to make the resolution now? I have one more thing. Do you want to make a resolution about putting out a letter?
Sure, I'll make the motion to send a letter to the community regarding the upcoming change of date for the vote. I don't know how much more specific it needs to be.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Under discussion, I just want you to know that there is a timeline put out by the state for the budget revote, which is exactly what we are doing, a revote. So between May 28 and June 5, the budget must be completed. Of course, we're not changing our budget, so that's that. June 5, deadline for publication of the first vote. Two required legal notices prior to budget revote. June 12, publication of the second and final legal notice prior to budget revote. June 5 through 12, public hearing to present the budget, 7 to 14 days prior to the revote. June 5 through 19, copies of the budget together with the attachments required by law must be made available upon request to district residents during the 14 days meeting preceding the revote, as well as at the public hearing on the revote, and on the day of the revote. Moreover, if changes have been made to the budget and that is disputed by the voters on the first vote, copies of the budget disseminated prior to a revote must incorporate such changes. There will not be any changes. June 12 through 18, last possible day of voter registration for a school board, via school board, last passable day for voter registration by a school district's board of registration, 7 to 12 days before the revote. So there are probably some young people who've turned 18 between May and June, and they could actually vote now, so that's interesting. June 13, deadline for mailing the budget notice, it's based before the revote. And June 19, uniform budget revote. So there will be other people in the state that will be voting on that day. I think with all of that information, I'm not sure that we need a letter in addition. I think that that information will get out there, people will talk to their neighbors, and everybody will say, you hear, you hear, you hear. It'll be in the newspapers as well, we can make a press call. So that's my personal opinion, that I don't think that we need a letter in addition. There's quite a cost to sending a letter out, isn't there? Can I say?
I can put it on Messenger, of course.
We'll put it on Messenger, we could even...
Messenger, however, typically only goes to those, that sounds right there. Typically only goes to those who have children enrolled in the district. We're gonna get that information regardless. My concern is perhaps a letter, which is costly. You can do the every door direct mail, or it's like seven or eight cents a piece to mail out. But is there anything that Bosse's could do with us? Because they know that they're the ones that do the district newsletter and basically all of our publications. Just, you know, just exploration on it at this point would be...
The other thing people should know is that if the budget's disputed on that date, we go right to a stare, because it's not another vote.
Right, so the budget is disputed, so let's make sure that...
And would you say we may need to put another, I guess we should. Late notice.
They have to, quite a few own it that.
That's a gazillion dollars right there.
Well, we have to do that, that's by law. That's why I'm saying, I'm not sure that we need anything in addition to that, because we are making it so well-known, I think. And we just want to make sure that people come out to the vote. And please tell your neighbors and friends, and your senior friends, and your chair of letting notes. I'll call for the vote, let's see if anybody else has anything else to say. Calling for the vote on that resolution and send out a letter. I like the idea, by the way, of finding out if Bosse's can help us with the direct mail. It's a good thing.
Anything that, you know, it doesn't have to be a letter, just some sort of mass canvassing of the community, just so that everyone's aware.
So... Do you have a resolution to read back that Ms. Wagner wrote?
Well, I just wrote that to send out a letter to the community that the date of the vote was changed.
Do you want to read word back notice to the community, or do you want to say this letter?
It doesn't necessarily have to be a letter, just a notice of communication to the community. That way we can explore what the options would be.
So that includes electronic and printed?
Well, my concern with electronic is that not everyone gets that in the community. That was part of the concern that I heard about when the vote was canceled, with that how and where did that information come from? Because a lot of people did not get that information, because we use the school messenger system. And that's great if you have kids in the district, but the majority of the voters don't have kids in the district. Or I don't want to say the majority, but a significant number of them didn't get that information. So my only concern would be if we only rely on posting it on the website, if they don't have internet access, they're not gonna get it. If they don't have kids in the district, they might not get it. And then not everybody reads the newspaper, because those sections, those legal notices are pretty lengthy sometimes.
So you're talking about getting some mail?
Exactly, just something that everyone would get to state this is what it's worth.
What would postcard cost?
Well, postcards to mail them are 35 cents each, and then the cost of a postcard. So ideally, I mean, in every door direct mail, or something like that would be much more cost-effective, because that's seven or eight cents.
That has to go through Bosse's?
It does not have to go through Bosse's. You can get, you know, you can get it printed anywhere.
Seven or eight cents times the household in our district is what?
It's a couple hundred dollars.
Do a letter or postcard?
Direct.
Every door direct mail.
Every door direct mail. I'm not in favor of a letter, that's a possibility.
I think, yeah, letters are more possible, so if we can do it in a cheaper...
Yes, so Lisa, we need to, we're probably supposed to defeat one and get another one and all this kind of stuff, but could you just read that now, the way it would be?
Okay, so the resolution to send a notice of communication to every door direct mail to the community for the change of the date, of the date change of the vote.
Is that a factor?
Sure. Encompasses that?
Voting? Mr. Siegel? I'm sorry, Ms. Wagner, you switched your seat, which is why I'm doing this back.
It's okay, yes.
And Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Ms. Bose?
Well, I'm just questioning, because I sent out one to Highland. Highland, and it cost $100.
$900. Was that with yours?
It was a letter, though, wasn't it?
It was a letter.
Yeah, this is not gonna be a letter. That's why we don't want to do a letter.
So hit me exactly again, what was that?
This is called a direct.
Well, yeah, mine was a direct mail.
Every door direct mail.
Exactly.
So what is every door direct mail? What does it pay the state to pay?
It is inexpensive. The only expense comes from when you print anything out for it. The actual mailing is only seven or seven and a half, eight per eight cents per item that you mail. You can get specific numbers right online, and it'll tell you what it would cost you. So before any expenses occur, you would know apart what it would be. But I'm definitely, you know, see what Bosse's can do for us. I know that they do all of our publications as it is, so let's see, at least explore.
I would like to, personally, then, I would like to let this go right now and see what we spend, and try to do it. I'd like to have the dollar.
So I'll just make motion to explore the option, you know, discuss the options later, and find out costs associated with it.
Okay. All right, and we can bring back on the June 7, there's still some time.
Sure, oh yeah, there's still time.
Okay, so then, anybody else voting yes, or was it to repeat this? The last thing I have prior to public comment is a letter of resignation from John Morgano. Pursuant to item 7, termination on page 6 of the agreement between myself and Eldon School District dated February 8, 2018, parrotback B, by superintendent, quote, "by the superintendent as the termination's by the superintendent." By written notice filed with the district clerk effective no less than 90 days after filing. Thus pursuant to the above, my last day in 90 days from filing with the district clerk, and the date is August 15, 2018. On a personal note, I've enjoyed the students of Eldon. They are well-mannered and friendly. I thank Mrs. Littler for all her support and understanding. Elton can recover if the plans laid out during my tenure with the district are followed. I wish you well. Don't see Morgano. Public comment is stand and be valid, you do not have to be...
Are you voting on it?
We're still...
We're not voting?
No.
We're not voting?
It's just a matter of voting or accept the resignation notice.
I'm moved to accept that resignation.
It's just a fact of the nature. You don't have to accept what you have. It's a contract.
I'm sorry.
You're in Florida tonight, so you made an announcement, he's announced a resignation contract with the rights of your notice of his resignation.
I'll move to accept that resignation.
I'll second that.
Yes.
We have a motion on the floor.
Yes.
Is there a resignation?
Your motion is?
To accept this resignation from Dr. Morgano.
Linda?
No.
Amanda?
Regret, regret. In my twelve years, I come again, in my best judgment, you wish I luck.
Yes. I'm not mistaken, the time appears. Public comment?
Jonathan Dutcher, Barry Melo. Dr. Morgano, this is sad news. I know you came in to a hot mess and you really put your best foot forward, especially what you put out there, take with the salary cut and everything else like that. The meetings that we have had, the task force that you put forth to help and try and remedy the school, I am just honored that I was able to even be in your presence and I am so sad to hear this and know that the kids love seeing you. My daughter loves seeing you, especially you would give her a high five. I know all these kids, you would know who my daughter is, but that's the only kid I can comment on. And I'm sorry that there was so much strength and grief that you came in and took on such a great, great task and headache and that people made it uneasy for you because you have done a wonderful job. And I wish you all the best in whatever you do after that and hope that you see that not all of Elton is negative and a lot of us truly appreciate it.
I wish you reconsider.
Say again?
I wish you would reconsider. We need you right now. We're in a bad state right now. You can help. You can make it work. A great candidate gets in there, we can do it as a team. And we need you to stay.
If that's the motion, I second that.
Any other public comment, please? Any motion to the chairman?
Comment the motion.
Second.
On the table?
Bye.
Bye.